No. Did you?
He didn't make it.
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Let's get her started. Okay. You guys had a chance to look at the September second.
Yes.
All right, we need a motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then this is the addendum that you just need to make sure that always stays with it, right? Yeah, okay. Cool, cool, cool. Thank you. All righty. Claims, anything unusual?
Well, we had to pay different for more pages because the more concrete was, um, public and so forth.
Right.
Fifty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That's the second pay on the project.
So, under the project?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Many problems.
Great, great, great.
We had electrical improvements to the shelter house, twenty-one hundred and eighty-three dollars. Bought some new mailbox for the street project that was on our side, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. And then we bought some more, um, meters and lead.
Bought more meters as in the kind that you can-
Finish up our, um, rising.
How many do we have left that's not?
Uh-
Or the proper?
Sixty-seven.
If all in brown?
Oh, right here in brown.
In town, what about North Brown?
It's all-
It's all done.
Okay.
Okay, so it's just our-
Are you just right here in?
Okay.
Okay.
We had to replace our data radio with seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. And so it's just the regular-
Regular.
Expense.
Any questions or discussions we need to have with us? Claims, no, I need a motion.
Motion.
All right, next thing on here is our twenty-twenty-six budget adoption. Anita, you're still up.
All right. We had our hearing last month and there was no comments or no.
Rebutts.
Right.
Yeah.
So, our budget is this, it's advertised, um, our total budget. This year, of the next year, will be five hundred and sixty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. And that's us about ninety thousand dollars. The difference is because we've got extra money on rainy day, our general budget, actual dinner operating budget is just a little bit less than last, last this past, this year. And then Park and Rec has about thirty thousand more in it. So, that's the difference.
Okay.
So, we just need a motion to approve it, or a second.
All right, who's gonna make a motion?
Motion.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Is that Addie not here?
Not here.
Okay, not here. Is there an issue with this, or just is everything, given the ordinance and we have no struggles with this, or is this gonna be a struggle, I guess? No question.
Oh, on Addie in the mobile home?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, she's looking to buy a lot, uh, that goes, um, prices round street, then they're on the other side of Sycamore apartment, and she said that she is going to purchase a new mobile home and put there on that lot.
Okay. Well, that fits a qualification.
And I give her all the information and she said she would be here, but.
All right, cool. Commonwealth on here.
Yeah, Matt works.
Good evening.
It wasn't very quick, that's why, but, yeah, just kidding.
Is that nice? I got a reason, I just had a hit before you.
There you go, I'm sorry.
We're doing a little better.
Yeah.
Matt works with Commonwealth Engineers. You guys know we've worked here in the past, water wastewater, our specialty, just, uh, I think I was here right, maybe the very first of this year, and, uh, wanna circle back and just let you know of a program that's out there, um, it's addressing lead service lines. I know, um, you guys, I don't know, as far as inventory goes, if you've had any success or not.
We're, I don't know, within probably sixty customers.
Are you, okay.
We're really close.
Good, okay.
We're really close.
Find much?
No.
Good, that's even better, so, um, what I'm speaking of, the, the federal government passed on to the state, as they usually do, um, trying to get lead service lines, lead water lines, out of the ground. There's grant money out there for that, there's one more year of it, to help communities get, you know, get the ident- identify the lead, where it is, get out and around. So, um, those are due April, we're in pretty good shape already, so.
We're really close.
That's good.
You don't think we're high risk of finding some at certain locations?
Uh, the, this might be one or two here left in the old house, but most people have already replaced that with pipe.
Okay, good. Houston, a lot of, a lot of, uh, lead fittings and things like that, that too, some of the Houston X and, and the old houses, so, uh, but, so the state's taking a aggressive approach to try to get rid of that stuff, so. That's one program. Um, the lead service line, and then, um, wasn't sure where you stood on any other types of water, I think they were able to resolve that in-house. And do their own treatment plant, so that was good, so it didn't be for you.
Not right, not right at this moment.
Okay, that's fair, so I just, like I said, I like to stop by and see my communities every once in a while, just let, let you guys know if there is anything out there, so, that's all I'm doing.
Well, something on my radar is our leak issues that we have, how we might go about-
Next year's your next war, or all year, or even year, so.
That's coming out, right?
Right.
Yeah. I know we've probably got some issues.
Not, not as far as our water, we're not having any issues. But, um, sewer, yes, sewer.
Okay.
Sewer's where we could tab our issues on needing to do the smoke test to figure out where, where our leaks are, such as that.
Yeah, it's been a while, I think.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you got an interest in doing that, um, usually what that does is, once you smoke test, then the I and I coming in here, and we're treating a lot of rainwater, that we don't need to treat. But it's leaking.
We did that about six or seven years.
Yes, you did.
Didn't we?
I don't remember, I've been here for sixteen, like, that same thing, I've been here five years.
Seven ago, and every recommendation made, we didn't act on, right?
Yeah, you got a planning grant for-
Yeah.
Fifty thousand dollars. Something back then, we did, identified or some, the work, you might wanna dust that off at some point, so, it's not getting any cheaper to treat like that, may even have an illegal sump pump or two hooked up to the, to the storm system. So, that's, that's, that's something you guys can correct pretty quickly, so, just wanted to make your way, that's all I got.
All right, Matt, I hope you, I hope you heal up quick.
I'm doing better, thanks.
All right. All right, uh, number four on there, and what's this, uh, black engineering, amp update, what's that?
Okay, um, we get our road project done, then we need to update our LTAP plan, and Brian said he would go ahead and do that for us, and his fee would be, not to exceed two thousand dollars, to update our plan. If we want to get any more relief, yes.
Okay, okay, all right, yeah. Do you need a motion on that, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. There you go, Anita. All right, salary ordinance is the next one. Did you talk about the salary ordinance last week? Did you talk about it, or did you just?
No. This will be your first reading.
Well, just give us a ten thousand foot overview first before you read it, just so we can have conversation.
Okay.
If we need to.
Okay, so the council member committed attorney review, the three percent increase after the employees were basing it on the hourly increase of a dollar per hour, that'll get us up on our additional hourly employee, fifteen dollars per hour, which is about the minimum in the law.
Yeah, I get it.
Increase in our, our assistant. Getting her a little better way.
Are you guys okay with, with that?
How many, we have six, town, twenty, five, and then we only have a part-time. We used the part-time, like, I didn't-
Three.
July, started right after the fourth of July, so July, August, September, three months a week, that's what we use, so, the part-time to help through the summer and, um.
That's more or less to keep up with it.
I would fire him, getting up on stuff.
Get ready for the festival.
Yeah.
That's summer only?
Yeah.
Any other conversation? Well, let's read the salary ordinance then, okay?
Ordinance twenty-eighty-two-five dash oh-five, we get members of the Tim, of Tamelsburg Town Council, Dr. following salary ordinance schedule of fifteen, January the first, twenty-twenty-six. Council members, eighteen hundred and ninety-five dollars yearly, attorneys, the attorney, eight, eight thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars yearly. The council members and attorney are paid quarterly, March the second, and the first, October the first, and December the seventh. Clerk treasurer, fifteen hundred and ninety-seven dollars bi-weekly, town marshal is one thousand fifty-four dollars bi-weekly, and that's based on twenty hours. Water sur superintendent is a certified operator, and that's Chris, based on twenty hours, is fourteen hundred and sixty dollars bi-weekly. Our full-time town superintendent, street superintendent, water sur assistant is seventy hundred and sixty dollars bi-weekly. Our second town street is water sur assistant is twelve hundred and eighty dollars bi-weekly. And additional hourly employee is fifteen dollars per hour, limited to thirty hours a week. The full-time clerk and clerk treasurer, only there'll be five days vacation year, and after one year of employment, ten days after two years of employment, fifteen days after five years of employment, and twenty days after ten years. Vacation time in the year that you have in the current year will be lost. Overtime will be paid at the rate of time and a half, radio radio, and the payday, however, overtime will not be paid unless an emergency call, overtime. The town will contribute three percent mandatory public return on a new and exciting record, reach specified employee and elected official. Other full employees can voluntarily try and post that contribution, allow, and are limited to thirty hours from work week with no additional benefits on, and that needed back.
Next time, any motion, any stand?
Yeah.
All right, okay. Any additional business? Lisa?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Aaron?
I did get an estimate for a brush, better for our excavator, if we're gonna be maintaining the walking trail.
Okay.
Um, other than that, the estimate was for sixty-one hundred dollar attachment.
It's an attachment on our truck.
Yes.
Fresh shape is our excavator, pretty good shape?
Yeah.
Can you drive it, Kay, or who, who drives it?
We both do.
We both do.
So you go through and then a tram, and only just have to clean it backwards, right?
Yes.
Well, I suspect we will have to maintain that for it.
That, that, that's the way, um, yeah, we've got quite a bit of wood down through here on both sides, and then to keep from like, or I was thinking where they was complaining about all the horse weeds and stuff over that steep bank. Well, then that's what this attachment on our escalator would work, for, 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 on the road, been working back and forth on the banks, because we can't get our tractor over, and last time we had the tractor out, we got a flat tire from them.
Is, is that something we should let, maybe schedule twice a year, or just do that, is that the most prudent way to do it? Or what's your thoughts? But, you know, I don't think we gotta do it monthly or nothing.
Right, right.
But maybe twice a year, what do you think?
I, I mean, that, hopefully, once a year, we could possibly get by with trimming the tree down through there. But, but with the weeds here, we're probably gonna have to do that, and between spraying and weeds, if we can keep it sprayed, it won't be so bad as the weeds.
Yeah.
But, I, I'd say tree trimming, we're gonna, and plus with all these new trees that they put in, uh, we'll possibly be trimming a couple times a year.
I, I think sixty-one hundred would be a good investment.
What size is it now, maybe?
Uh, for, besides that, whether we, we have, what the numbers they ran on it was a forty-two inch.
Forty-two inch?
Wide cutter, for the hydraulic flow that our machine has. And this would be purchased at Boyd and Sons in Washington.
Is it easy to put on and off, best you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Quick attachment, or buckets, and then do a couple of buckets.
What do you think?
Anita.
Then you good with it, okay. Any motion?
Motion.
Second this one. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're good.
Hey, if it's okay, well, you use river buckets, you do it.
Well, that's whatever you need.
An extra money.
Whatever you, yeah.
Okay, we'll buy it out of river, but.
And, uh, I did put up one-way traffic signs, that was just kind of a waste of our money. They pay no attention to it, none whatsoever.
This street along the-
You're a rubber tree, I even probably hate them, you not see the signs, and they just look at me.
It can only be large stuff signs, so.
Well, Joe, that'd be a good place for man-hem.
What? Pardon?
It takes time to develop.
It does.
Yeah. But, these people, and all those ladies.
That makes it even harder to change if you've been standing on.
Right, right. I decided to put that out there, I did, the signs up.
Well, there's no attention frame, so we're on the pass each other.
Right.
And there's really not room.
No, because I gotta water me to live, that's close to the road over there, and I'm gonna have to end up switching it out to something different, because they keep running over it and, and knocking it off of there, so I've gotta come up with a different style of living for that one, that's really close to the road, that they're, they keep knocking it off.
Can we move it back?
Yeah.
I can't move it, it's right, it's, it's there.
Then it's incomplete, just.
Well, then they'd be actors for something.
Well, slow down. Yeah, let's just encourage Joe to help us get down the course.
I do like our new speed limit signs.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would like to see if, I don't know where Joe got, was looking up, two more possible, but I would like to see if, has a couple more.
I think that's something maybe we can work towards, maybe next year, where's our next dangerous, our next two dangerous locations, or something like that.
I, I think once we get East Oak, Red Blacktop here in less than a month. They're gonna pick up their speed, because it's just gonna be that smoother surface. Throughout that direction, just to kindly, hey, well, we need to slow down here, but they can't see the, the big green sign that we got our feet on.
In, in that, post those red, um, flag, flag strips, or whatever they are on top of the speed limit signs, or did we do that?
No, no, Endoff did that.
Those are very helpful, simple thing, but very helpful.
And it has slowed a lot of people down, out here on the highway, but, but still, some people that-
Don't like it.
Yeah, there's a lot of people, all that, that complain, you know, shouldn't, shouldn't be lowering the speed limit.
People don't like change.
Right.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Joe's not here, Park and Rec. Anything to report? Yeah, okay, all right. And how about water leaking justice?
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I know.
Five months.
But they paid the bill.
They paid the bill, they drug their feet on every fix, they just did fix it, it took them over five months to, yeah, it took them over five months to, to decide that they was gonna get after it and fix it, because they finally find out where they, oh, well, Kyle says, well, we're just gonna let leak till when, till it comes to the top of the ground, well, it wouldn't ever come to the top of the ground. So, they did finally fix it Saturday, and somehow sufficiently, they dug right, one spot, dug right straight to the leak, and I told him that it was a sharp bite leaking, and that's what he dug out, so they did get a fix.
Okay. Well, let's, let's just act on that. Fix, 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 fix. Man a motion on that. Is that you, AJ, you make a motion?
No, I'm not.
Okay, I will, I'll make a motion.
See, that's good, I didn't do it.
I'll do it, I'll do it, I'll do it. I'll make a motion, look for a second.
I guess I'll second, grudgingly.
Okay. All in favor say aye. All opposed, say nay. All right, two and none, all right. Okay. AJ, what do you bring to us? Oh, I'm sorry, Anita first, all right, sorry, Anita first.
Oh, that's all I had.
That's all you have?
Oh, there was one person that said that. To the dollar store. That's the possibility.
I don't think, no, we're not allowed to, I don't believe, because the state has right of way there, yeah, I don't, I don't think that's even a possibility, we wanted to. Now, if we had property off of that, or the, maybe, but we didn't have that. Okay, now AJ, anything?
No.
Uh, me, I, I don't tell everybody, I watched the video camera last time, and it's all good, so, if you can attend, I recommend using that, I was texting folks, of course, there was a pain in the tummy, but I wasn't officially here anyway, but that, you know, it was, uh, it worked good, you could tell what was going on, okay? That's my feedback. Jen, where you at?
Couple of questions, um, somebody called me and asked about, on Sycamore, down by Suter Lane, where they're building that new house, there's like a place on the road, and they were asking when it would be fixed, I thought I would ask.
I had temples in here last week, and they haven't got back with me on the estimates of patching, the small patches that we have, the boys that done that, was supposed to have already had it fixed, the, the, building the new house right there on the corner, they told me they was already gonna have it fixed, they haven't got it fixed, I told them that I had temple coming out, and that, uh, they would be responsible for the bill, they finally got a little ill with me, because they didn't like that, said they was gonna take care of it themselves, but it still hasn't been done, so, I'm gonna have an estimate here, I would think, in the next few days, from temple on the small patching projects that we have here in town.
How did they create it, I'm curious.
Uh, they had put in a new sewer line across the road to the manhole.
A, a user put in a new sewer line across a city street.
Yes. The, well, they're a construction company, so I wanted to do that.
Okay. Good date on when they're gonna fix it back, because it's almost too late in the year to even get, bring in Blacktop, right?
Um, not quite yet, so, we're getting close, because temples is pushing their, well, they're done with their concrete work, they're all done with concrete work, so now they're gonna be milling, and should be coming into Blacktop, we're good.
But I, I would, I'd pressure them for a date, and it wouldn't take anything more than thirty days.
I, I guess we're just gonna have to send them a letter, because talking to-
Whatever it takes, but we gotta make it formal. Yeah, we gotta make it formal to get it happening, okay?
All right, we'll get a letter rolled up tomorrow, and get a mail to them.
So I can tell the person who called me that, like, you're on it.
I am, I am working on, I've tried pressuring the boys, but they just ain't moving on, so I did have temple in here with estimates last week.
All right, that's good, because, you know, we'll, I don't mind acting if they don't hit the date that they say they're gonna hit.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, just curious, I saw several complaints on Facebook about our water bills, like going way out, is something happening, like, people saying it went from like, seven to like, hundred and fifty or something?
How many people living in the household?
Then, I mean, that did look at each person that we seen complaining.
And there's no, like, crazy leaks or something going on?
No, there's no crazy leaks, but they just have higher water consumption, we don't know how many people's there.
Yeah.
But we can show you on our graph of the, the water they're using, one person even said, because last month, when it didn't read, we stopped and looked in their meter pit, they come running outside, well, now, oh, well, you was tampering with our meter, want to charge us, though. These people, they just, Facebook, they want to complain.
I know.
And, and then post anonymously, well, if you tell us who it is, maybe we can try to help you here, tell you if you have a leak, and a lot of times, when you go tell these people you got a leak, well, then you gotta take the cuss, and just not hit them for cap real well sometimes, but I do try to tell people if they got a leak, most people are happy that I tell them they have a leak, and other people just don't seem to do nothing about it.
My favorite is when they say, where's the set?
Yeah, I, I mean, because here we are in the situation again, Virginia Jones has got a three-hundred gallon a daily.
Again?
Again, I've been on them for over a month, I took the cussing from Mike, and I just left, I said, Mike, I've just come down here to tell you that you got a leak, and he just blowed bum up on me, and I just left, and they have still yet to fix the leak. And I just left, and they have still yet to fix the leak.
So where's Denny, Danny, Buddy?
Oh, yeah, Danny knows it, all, all of them, Denny knows it, Danny knows it, Buddy knows it. They have two different backos, they have access to, to fix the problem, but nobody do nothing about it.
So you're seeing the same messages I saw there?
Yes.
Okay.
This is just, I, I talked with the guy, I was getting my truck worked on, that has South Lawrence water. He says every six months he has to replace the guts in his toilet. And he says they have more groundwater than they do clear water, and his bill is sixty dollars a month. I said, our bill in pounds with sewer is about sixty dollars. I replaced the guts in the lab toilet the other day, and I've been here almost ten years, and that's the first time I've been replaced since I've been here. So, we, we do have hard water, and that might smell a lot rotten sometimes, but we don't have the worst water in Indiana, I can tell you. And our water, as far as the price, is cheaper than most. You're gonna always have a complaint.
Yeah, I know.
They're there.
Everything on Facebook's believable.
I know, it just takes one complaint, and then fifty more.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they just fixed both of them.
Did you see him at the meeting?
No.
And, and that's what we try to tell them, tell them to remove it.
That's it, that's all I got.
I had to, Salem's getting ready to do a major water project here soon too, because of the start of that. They, they had several boil things last summer, or this past year, and it wasn't because of the leak either.
No, it was, it was new.
It was execution of water, yeah, yeah.
It, it's their new plant, yeah, and I heard it was gonna cost up with the three million.
They've already done.
I know. Okay, any answers? Alright, let's go around, or start with two?
Oh, me?
Yeah.
I thought you were talking there. Um, no, I don't really have anything, um. You can still fly right through the, before we stop here. I don't even.
That's called the new trees. That's called the new trees, you can't see stop.
Baloney. But I think that was nice.
Well, it never hurts to get a license plate and make sure that gets the job. It never hurts, it never hurts.
They do the same thing on Hickory, they're going to work, and they fly through there, and they'll stop. And I mentioned that before, and he set up at the other street, and they knew he was there, and they just slowly drove and stopped.
That's why I say, if we would get a license plate number, we'd have immensely.
And I think we had an issue with the parade, didn't we, down near your house?
Yeah, my nephew almost got ran over. Yeah, during the parade, cut through the middle of the parade.
Come on, Ben.
But Adam chased him to try and get a license, and couldn't catch him.
What else?
That's it, I don't know anything. I just wanna know what was wrong with the shelter house that we had to upgrade to get all electric, because I don't know how many times they hit us to put more than electric on the shelter house.
Okay, so I put more plug-ins on, because for people up on the stage with their music, but the biggest cost was the electrical box that they had to put out behind the, the Legion building, it was completely shot. And the boys said they couldn't even believe it worked, so they had to put a whole brand-new back air, so that was just tied in with the part of the money that was at the shelter.
I know, we put a lot of money in that, and then it, then Chelsea's not good enough, and we put more. So that's, that's probably the fourth time that we've had to be upgraded down, I know, I just, I just didn't know. But it never included the Legion.
No, no, that, that electrical panel out behind the Legion is our electrical panel, and that's what they used to, to, for their own plates.
Anything else?
That's, I just, you know, I just wonder.
You're a lady.
No, I just, I just wanna say, you've probably not noticed in the kitchen, but M P P had some employees, which Mount Taylor painted all in here, and you see that, how white it looks, and we're so thankful for that, but M P P had employees come. They got down the hens in the scrub, the floor, scrubbed cabinets, scrubbed refrigerator, really worked hard. I sent a thank you card on behalf of the Betterment Committee for their, their hard work, so, you know, look around and see things look clean.
You got something else?
I did think of something else, this old sign out here is horrible. Oh, yes. Needs to go, we'd like to be able to buy a digital sign. We're getting ready to put one in a church, and I know we can't afford that, but the old sign that's down there is better than what we've got here, so I ask if they're not gonna do anything with it, which obviously they're not, if we can have that, and then have it bolted on to a metal plate out here, and place it that old one out here. Anybody got a problem with that?
You're getting the sign from the church?
The one that's up there now, at the back.
At the church, okay.
Okay, and they're just gonna get rid of it for nothing? Okay, alright.
That's what I understand. So if that's the truth, then I guess maybe we ask your permission to be able to use it out here?
I, I don't have a problem with it, as long as it's, yeah, no, bullshit.
With Eric, this sign here is, is shot, and we need.
Do you wanna, do we wanna haul it off, or do we wanna put it in storage, what do we wanna do?
We're not going for that, but I had been, I've been calling around places, cause Ben had mentioned about the electronic sign that they were wanting for the end of the building, but the sign that they had was forty inches long and eighteen inches wide, I don't think many people were gonna see much of that, just right up here on the end of the building, unless they were stopping in front, I was breaking my neck to turn around and look to see what was on. And them older signs like that are just outdated, and I've been trying to call around and find places that kinda rebuilt them, had the, the parts to rebuild that.
Yeah.
Every place has pretty much gone to digital signs instead of them old signs. Uh, there was possibly one down in Kentucky that we found for five hundred on the internet, but I hadn't talked to Ben about that just yet.
Okay. No, I, I don't mind, as long as we, you know, deal with that appropriately, yeah, okay?
So if you all can get a sign for free, we'll figure out some way to make a stand for something out here.
Anything else? Okay, sir?
No, well.
I'm willing to let you speak.
Alright. Is everybody aware that you probably is the AIM conference, your statewide association of cities and towns? It's gonna be over in French Lick in a couple weeks, for three days. That's where all the towns and cities around the state come, and their workshops, and educational workshops. Um, or C D U's for some of the employees can get credits, for certifications, and so it's a great opportunity to go, they got a municipal day on Wednesday, I think, it's like, I mean, it's cheap, alright, for just that one day. It's here, aren't you doing a little conference, but there's a lot of the towns that are in the same boat you guys are in, and there was a new bill passed by the legislature this year that's not very favorable with cities and towns, in terms of revenue.
Yeah.
It's shifting everything, you're getting more corporate tax.
So what's the name of that organization that's doing that?
AIM, A I M, Accelerating Indiana Municipalities. It used to be called I Act, Indiana Association of Cities and Towns, back in the day, and they changed the name for whatever reason. But they hold, this is a big annual conference, a lot of towns are members of that, I don't know if Campbellburg is, or not. They do, so now everything has the extra to go to that.
Right, right.
It's a day well spent, or a couple hours well spent, it's closed this year, so it's Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, like twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third of October.
We're tied up to do the.
Alright, okay, good, I mean, it's, it's, I don't know. But it was during the day. You weren't gonna run into a lot of towns your size, and, you know, all sharing some same accommodations.
Alright, anybody got anything else? Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second? Cool, thank you.
Okay, meeting's over, I'm just gonna. There on that table is some like lost and found.